Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 8th School Committee meeting. Thank you for checking in on TV and signing in. And glad to be here at 7 o'clock, getting ready to go. We have some people signing in as part of our teaching and learning highlights, so they're going to be jumping in here in a few minutes. But let's first begin with the open public comment. There were no public submissions sent to the community inbox this week, so nothing to read off for us all. Approval of minutes? Any discussion about the minutes?
I didn't have any changes other than I was, and Dr. Mello I saw was on remotely. Janet has her down as not present, but then participating in the curriculum review. But I thought she stayed for the-
She was here for the whole time.
So would that one change, then? It should just say, "School staff participating remotely up top."
That's correct. And I think later in the afternoon, this afternoon-
Did she send them out?
Janet sent the corrected minutes out.
So that was my own change.
But I think it should be noted, because the one we had on file was that. So just noted that Allison was-
I should have checked my emails. Sorry about that.
I also did not have any other changes.
I only had one question, and Dr. Bertus, maybe you can help me. And it's really kind of a word thing that just caught my eye. Under our curriculum review on page two, and the second sentence is accurate in some ways. It says, "Changes to this cycle are made based on events at the state level." And it's a very small thing, but to me, in my mind, I'm not sure we change our curriculum review cycle always based upon the state level, but I think that changes to the cycle are considered based upon the state level.
They are considered.
They are considered.
And sometimes we adjust them.
And I think that's, I think, I think we consider-
It's more accurate.
I think we consider the state level, what happens there, but I don't think we're mandated to change our curriculum cycle-
Correct.
-because of a decision made at the state.
What the state does impacts our curriculum cycle, but I think your point is a really good one.
I think we could say impacted, actually, too. Impacted is a good word, because we are impacted by it. But I don't think we're mandated.
No.
No, definitely consider it. We can take that into consideration, but I agree. There's many districts, I will tell you, that don't even have a formalized process like we do for curriculum review.
Agreed, agreed. So I would suggest we change the word, "Changes to this cycle are considered" based on events at the state level.
I think that's-
Is that okay?
That would work.
Yeah, I like that, too, because it just-
More accurate.
It just read funky to me. Yeah, great. Any other changes or suggestions? Like a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of November 24th, 2020.
Second.
Second by Rob, motion by Tina, second by Rob. All in favor? 3-0-0. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, I think we're at our teaching and learning highlight. Very excited to have the students. I see them signing on already, and our principal as well. So why don't you, Dr. Bertus, please?
Happy to introduce, and I'll have them introduce themselves, too, by name, but we have members from our Ahern Middle School Student Council, and they're going to be talking about some initiatives they have going on at the Ahern. You have Ms. Frazier, the principal, that's there, and then a couple of our teacher representations, or they really lead our student council. So we have Ms. Alicia Camp alone, and then we have Ms. Jackie McCann that's there. And then we have our fabulous students, so I will give them the honor of introducing themselves, and they'll be able to tell you what they've been busy with at the Ahern.
Hi, my name is Kate Noonan, and I am our student body president for the Ahern Middle School. Today, we're going to talk about our goals and plans for this upcoming school year. We're really excited for this today.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Plato, and I'm the vice president for Student Council, and I'm really excited to be here today to share with you all the ideas that we've been working on.
Hi, I'm Jacob Hindon. I'm the Student Council Communications Director, and I'm really happy to be here and be able to share some of the great projects I've been able to work on.
So the first thing we're going to talk about today is how we want to involve the students in the more like community and how the one-on-one interaction. So the first thing that we did is we introduced ourselves in face at a meeting that we did with the whole school during their lunch periods. So if you guys know the cohorts, how we're split, so me and Sarah Plato, we are in Cohort B, but Jacob, he's in Cohort A. So I thought that we could do Zoom meetings and Zoom in and talk to them, because I feel like videos, you're not really getting that one-on-one interaction that I know a lot of people need, especially during these times. And it's also a thing like, yeah, we're real, too. Like, we're not just someone you see on the camera, like, we're here, too. It's like very important to have that, and that was a big thing. So I think Mrs. McCann is going to show a picture of us when we did that.
I can't show it, share my screen, but it is posted on my Twitter page. So you can see the, what we call the Johnny Fives, that was set up in the cafeteria, and the kids were on there. So check out my Twitter, and you can see the picture there.
It was a really cool experience, especially since we're in such a different type of year this year. And we're planning on many more ways of incorporating the whole entire students and getting everyone more involved, but still having it under guidelines. The next thing we're going to talk about is our buddy system from Sarah.
So I'm here today to talk about the cohort buddy system that the Student Council has created over the past couple of meetings. And so basically, the overall concept of it was to really connect the two cohorts, because we're unfortunately divided right now because of COVID protocols and everything. So how this is going to work is with the help of our homeroom representatives and everyone involved with Student Council, we created a survey, and it's going to be provided to the homeroom teachers soon. So they're going to give out the survey to all the kids in their homerooms, and they're going, all the kids are going to answer it. And some of the questions on the survey include, "What are some of your favorite pastimes? What are some subjects that you do well in? What are some subjects that you need improvement, that you need to improve in?" And it's basically, the overall idea is to kind of get paired up with someone that, from the other cohort who's also in your homeroom, that the homeroom teachers will be pairing you up with. It's to kind of get someone that you wouldn't necessarily expect to be paired up with, because I know especially during COVID, people have kind of had a hard time getting out of their shell, and, because they haven't been able to see their family and friends. So I think that this is a really neat idea to kind of let people be able to do that. And especially for people who have always struggled with it, you know, during COVID times especially, it's really important to have that, you know, kind of contact with people, because it's, you know, good for our mental health, and it's just good to be able to talk to people. And if you have a question about homework, you can talk to them about it. If you, if you don't feel comfortable talking to your homeroom teacher about it, or anyone else in the class, if you have a project that you need to get done, and you don't have anyone to pair up with, there's, you can pair up with your buddy. And it's just a really neat way to kind of get the whole school involved, because that's something that, you know, people haven't been able to do as much with the school year getting cut short and everything, so.
Next, we're going to talk about our Toys for Tots donation and other donations we're planning on.
Hello, I'm Jacob Hindon, and I've already introduced myself as the Communications Director, and I'm here to talk about the Toys for Tots toy drive. So it's a toy drive that runs from, well, it's already started, to the 18th of December, and it's going to be a really nice drive, so that we can collect toys and help lots of people. Now, the importance of this drive is, this is really a hard time. This is a hard time for everyone. And so we've decided to step up and decide to donate some toys. People, all sorts of students can donate to their homeroom teacher, and they get, it gets placed in a donation box where they can go to the Toys for Tots. Why do people do it? It's a great way to give back to the community, and it's a great way to just do something nice. It's an act of kindness, and that's what we want to encourage. And so that's the Toys for Tots drive.
So a big part of our Student Council is trying to get everyone involved and just trying to form some sort of community again. So we have a couple more ideas and plans for the future. So we definitely want to incorporate more drives and still have it under the COVID guidelines. For example, with the Toys for Tots, we're having it unwrapped, and the gifts must be, you know, like teddy bears has to be in a box, just for COVID precautions, as well as we're trying to incorporate, like, families and more community buildings. So, for example, a patriot player, maybe, or any type of person that a lot of people look up to that is in our community, because that, especially last year, I remember looking forward to that, and we don't really get to have that this year, but I've had plans to, like, send mail to people, and I've done this, but I've been sending mail. And I was planning on giving, like, asking kids questions, and I can take that and then interview them. So that's definitely a big thing. Also, student-based homework help and schoolwork in general. So a lot of kids are struggling with the homework and schoolwork, especially in these times, because we don't have that one-on-one teacher interaction. So I think not only homework help, but student help specifically, because some kids are sometimes a little afraid to talk to students, or sometimes they're a little, sorry, some kids are afraid to talk to teachers. And having a student, because we're only a four-year age gap, even though that does seem big if you're like a fifth grader trying to talk to an eighth grader, it's not that big in a sense, and I'd like to think that at least I could sometimes be more approachable, and I'd want to be approached by. So another plan is some form of an eighth-grade virtual gathering. So if you, we have a semi-formal every, for every eighth-grade year, but this year and last year, they were cut short because of COVID. So that was definitely something that we all really want to do. So that was our goals, and we're going to take the last couple of minutes to answer any questions that anyone has. Thank you for listening.
Well, thank you. What a great presentation, and great description, prepared description, everything, and also great poise. Every time I see students present on Zoom, I think to myself, you know, how much practice did any one of us have as students, talking to cameras on computers? And it was all done very well. So thank you all for your presence and how you presented your topics and representing your student body. Excellent. Any questions from the committee members?
It's not a question, but it's a comment, just how wonderfully, I mean, you guys have adapted to the situation we are in with the pandemic. I know Student Council is very active in the community in a lot of the things. I mean, both my sons, when they were at the Ahern, were involved with Student Council, and, "Hi, Ms. Camp alone, nice to see you." And so many of the things, the putting together the Thanksgiving food baskets, and they're very hands-on activities, and you've managed to find other ways to be involved in the community and make an impact through your actions during this, this time when we're all challenged to find a way to participate, and, you know, we have to be a little bit less hands-on, but you can still make, you're showing that you can still make a direct impact on people's lives. And I love the buddy system idea. I think that is great from a, just a social and emotional well-being standpoint, and making friends, and helping one another from an academic standpoint. I'm just so impressed with all of you, and yes, you all speak much better on Zoom than I do. So I wanted to congratulate you on that as well. So thank you for everything you do.
Yeah, thank you so much. Oh, sorry, to you.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
I think, yeah, there was definitely a big part that we all definitely wanted to give back to the community, because that's always been a big thing, a part of the Ahern, and just the whole entire Foxborough community in general. There's always a want to help other people, and especially during this time, we can't really, because the COVID precautions, but we definitely all, and especially a bunch of the kids on the Student Council Committee, they all were really wanting to help, and that's a great thing.
That's wonderful.
I think-
And also, like, when coming up with the cohort buddy system that we created, it was, we really had to think about, you know, our whole school, because when making our videos for why we wanted to be on the Student Council and, you know, some ideas that we had, we couldn't think about the normal ideas that some people would necessarily have, because, you know, it is a different time, and no one's ever been through anything like this before. So coming up with it, we really had to take into consideration, not necessarily ourselves, but everyone as a whole. And so I think that the idea that we came up with is really a good way to kind of let everyone be involved.
Definitely.
Thank you. I saw Kiara had her hand up, which is great to have. We got all the presidential power in one room. From 5 through 12, we got both presidents.
Excuse me. I'm, just in case you guys don't know, I'm Kiara, and I'm the Student Council President at the Fox, at the high school. And I just wanted to say, I'm impressed with your energy and how well you guys have spoken, and it makes me really excited that you guys are coming up next year and going to come and participate, hopefully, in our Student Councils. And I'll talk to my board and our advisors, but if you guys would want to work together and collaborate on something together, maybe in the coming year, 2021, I'd be really open to doing that, because you guys, I, I'm so impressed. That was great.
Yeah, that's something definitely we, like, really want to look forward to, and I think that'd be also a great way, just because, like, the eighth graders from last year definitely had a more difficult time, because they didn't have, like, the sports teams or the things that you'd normally get connections to. But I think maybe doing something that incorporated all the grades and not just, like, the student body, like, even though, like, the student body would run it, just, like, something to incorporate us, everyone, that'd be awesome.
And to add on to what Kate said, it was, it must have been harder to coordinate, because the quarantine still had been going on, but it was fairly, like, new and more chaotic at the time. So now that there's more refined rules and protocols, we, we think it would be great to be able to collaborate and things like that.
And I went to what they both said, like, especially with COVID stuff and, like, the upcoming, you know, school year, we, like, getting involved would be a great way for not only us to kind of, you know, be more active in the community, but also to kind of prepare us for high school, because I know, you know, a lot of us are planning to do Student Council in high school, so collaborating would be a really good way to kind of, you know, be prepared for that.
That's awesome. I'll definitely, oh, excuse me, I'll definitely reach out to you guys, and we'll, we'll figure something out.
And I'm sure the kid, like, the other Student Council members will definitely love that.
Yeah, perfect. Anything else?
No, I just want to echo what everyone else has said. I'm really, we'll do it this way, it's easier. Your empathy is what's most impressive to me. Your concern about how everybody is disengaged, or can be very easily disengaged right now, and trying to find opportunities to create that engagement, not only for the kids that you know in school, but all the kids that are newer to the middle school, and then the grades in between. So very, very impressive, and Kiara, we, you know how much we love you. So thank you, guys, very much. And Jackie, I didn't want you to feel left out, so hi, Ms. McCann, too.
I didn't mean to ignore you, Ms. McCann.
I know.
I just, I know Ms. Camp alone very well.
I know how Jackie looks forward to these meetings. She's a devout watcher.
I really am. I was very excited for tonight, because I was like, I love this meeting every time.
Brent?
Just to pile on to the compliments that you all richly deserve, I want to just say that the efforts that you put forward now are seeds to future efforts that I'm hoping will continue in your own lives, regardless of where you are after Foxborough. This type of, I guess, behavior is something that becomes a habit of mind and a skill that you develop over time, in the same way that empathy and giving and thankfulness and gratitude, those are all skills that we hone over time. And the more you can instill that in your various class communities, the more rich experiences you and our community will have every year forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Brett. Well, great. What a great presentation. I know Bevy Lord's not here to reminisce, and so I hate to fall back a little bit, but I'm just going to take one moment to fall back like Bevy Lord would. And I don't know if you all, you probably all don't know Mademoiselle Lord, who was my teacher at the middle school, but I was at the Ahern Middle School from 1977 to 1980, and I wound up being a class officer myself. And I can honestly tell you that my life was changed by Frank Toomey, the principal at the Ahern, who was a fabulous principal, a great man, and he taught me a lot about leadership. So I learned a great deal of my leadership baseline at the Ahern Middle School, just like you are. So I'm so proud to see it. I'm also proud, as leaders, that you're keeping your eye on the ball, echoing what everyone is saying. During the pandemic, it's easy for us to get sidetracked and not see and not pay attention to what's important. You've already listed a Toys for Tots, you've listed a get-together for the eighth graders amongst the chaos of the pandemic. So as leaders, you're keeping your eye on the ball, so I'm proud of you for that. So thank you all so much for a great, a great presentation this evening. Good luck and keep up the hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You make us all really proud.
This was a great teaching and learning highlight.
Ugh. So perfect. Thank you.
I'm smiling from ear to ear behind this.
I am, too.
Just in case anyone was wondering, they did a great job.
We can't ever forget these moments for kids, right? I mean, and these are unmeasurable. They're, I mean, they're obvious, but there's no, there's no paper and pencil on this, so.
They're leading.
Thank you so, absolutely, absolutely. Winner. Thank you. Well, next on our agenda is the preliminary discussion of our FY '22 budget. Dr. Bertus and Mr. Yocna.
All right, so you have the budget in your packet, as well as the PowerPoint presentation that we'll go through. This is our preliminary, our first pass at the FY '22 budget, and we have a timeline that, just as a reminder, on the next slide here, of what we've already done to date, and then what is coming in the future. So we started off with having a joint town and school administration leadership meeting to frame the budget process from the town side, and that took place in October. And then we had the joint meeting with all of you, with the Board of Selectmen, to review in November, the revenue forecast. And then we're here this evening for this first pass, the preliminary. We'll need to have, with our policy, not policy, excuse me, Budget Committee, we'll need to set that date with School Committee, as well as with our Advisory Committee liaisons. And then we will move forward with our additional discussions on the budget in December, and then your vote for the recommended school budget in January, and then go to the Advisory Committee for the review of it in February, and then town meeting in May. Kind of an overall picture. So our budget message, this slide here, there's a lot of information on this slide, but it's really important information, because this really is what frames the entire budget and the philosophy behind it. And it really is continuing with a high level of services, educational services for our students, and being able to look at every program, every service for our students, and have a budget that's going to support that. So we also understand we have shifting student populations, and being able to adjust to our student populations and any needs related to those. So it is a philosophy that's consistent historically with our financial approach, and, most importantly, it is a strong commitment to education for the students of Foxborough. So this budget here, now, as you're aware, our strategic plan sunsetted in June of 2020, although we were not in school, and then we're looking towards the planning for success and a framework, but that's really based on the district strategy for improvement that you've all voted and accepted. So those strategies are listed up there on the right-hand side. You have the objectives from the strategic plan, but more importantly, right now, what is really built off of that as we go forward and with planning for success are these strategies for improvement. And that first one, equity and ensuring equity for all, really is looking at all of the structures we have in place, meeting the needs of all of our students, and being able to increase student achievement, obviously, and access. So where we're looking at programs, we're looking at special education, we're looking at English learners, we're looking at courses, all of that. That all comes under ensuring equity for all students. Academic excellence, rigor, relevance, and being responsive. That really is what this budget is guided by as well, and making sure that we provide those opportunities for advanced learnings through curriculum experiences that are rigorous, that are relevant, and that are responding to the needs of students today. And then the third strategy there, communication and community engagement, expanding opportunities for all of our stakeholders through communication to be able to positively affect student learning, and then in our educational environment and the greater community. So this budget, it maintains reasonable class sizes, it preserves our current programs for, and services to students, it takes into effect adjusting and adapting to our changing student populations and meeting those needs. As we talked a lot last year, out of our increases in special education costs and making sure that we're meeting programmatically the needs of students, and then also addressing costs that come along associated with technology. Obviously, we put a lot of technology in this year, and thankfully, we had the CARES Act funding in order to do that, but we do have increased costs that come along with technology, just when you think about subscriptions and maintaining, and now that we're going to have all of these devices in a one-to-one environment, you're going to have associated costs as well. So lastly, it's a budget that's going to enable us to continue to meet the state guidelines that we need to meet in order to run a public school system as well.
So the program, as, as you know, is state-consistent. We build the budget by, effectively by building, and we incorporate every staff member and their salary agreements as we're building that budget. So it's a, from a transparency point of view, it's an all-in budget. There is, even though we do have other sources of revenue, whether they're grants, circuit break, or state funds, whatever, revolving accounts, we put everything into the budget, and then we deduct those at the end, so that effectively, the town is seeing what the true cost of the school system is, in, in this case, less a few million dollars in outside resources that are coming in to fund it. We have assumed this for probably 15 years, that there will be $125,000 in savings based on retirements. Now, that's a basic assumption of about three to four teachers going out, assuming they're going out at the high end and you're hiring at the low end. As we all do know, there are certain fields that, obviously, that's not usually the case where you can do that. Science, as an example, is a very hard field to find teachers that are qualified up on the levels that we're trying to promote, especially with our AP courses and things of that nature. So you don't always get that one-to-one savings that you're looking for. But, again, the budget is built that we are going to assume that we're going to save $125,000 through retirements of people that we don't know yet. We, we know of one retirement for next year at this point, and based on COVID, anything can change. So, you know, the second part of that, as I said, is that there is the grants and the revolving accounts that actually reduce what the town's cost on this annual budget So the budget, as it stands today, is a, has a $1,116,894 increase, or 2.98%. The Board of Selectmen, based on the revenue projections, was looking for a 2.5% increase, which would have represented a $937,000. So as you can see, even with this budget, and you're going to see that this is pretty much a bare-bones budget. We have not added much of anything. Matter of fact, you're going to see that we only have a .1 FTE change in the entire budget based on need, and all salaries are, have been level funded now for the second year. So it's really what we're, our increase is based on our COLA and our, you know, contracted lane increases for teachers, custodians, everybody who has those in there. So it's, it's really basically a base budget with those increases.
Expenses level funded.
Expenses level funded.
Not salaries, expenses.
Right, yeah. Jesus, why does this keep doing that?
Do the side one instead of the middle.
Too far. There you go. You're there. So as I said, in FY '22, there is only one position change. We actually have made that change in FY '21. So it's a, even though it wasn't in the FY '21 budget, we have to do it, and it's really based on a need within our IGO school, and it's based on caseload requirement for a speech and language teacher. So that teacher actually is a 1.0 this year, but they're represented as a .9 in the FY '21 budget. We know that's going to carry forward, because, again, based on the caseloads that we're seeing in there. As I said, building-level expenses and even district-level expenses, for the most part, are level funded. You're going to see a few that actually decreased, and one that's increasing. The special education out of district is the one area that, again, we are, we had 36 out of districts at the beginning of this year. We're now projecting at, we're currently at 35, 34, actually. And that's because a couple, based on this whole pandemic situation, have kind of changed in the environment, but that, again, can reoccur on us. We're estimating we're going to have 35 for next year. We don't have anybody aging out, we don't have anybody graduating out in the year. So it's likely that, you know, we're not going to, it's going to be a pretty stable out-of-district tuition basis. One area that's somewhat bright, and it's really, we've been talking about this for the last couple of years, and we've actually been bringing this number down each year for the last couple of years, and that's our utility cost. As the district has continued to go into higher efficiency things, whether it's lighting, variable-speed pumps, and things of that nature, it really has dropped our, our utility costs on the electric side. The one negative to that is, and we don't really have a good handle on it, is that the rebates that we were getting from the solar arrays at the two, the landfill and at the Elm Street, apparently, there was a calculation mistake that was giving us a higher credit than we should have been getting for the last couple of years. They're not getting the difference back. However, the, the credits going forward are going to be normalized to what they're supposed to be, and we really don't have a great handle on how much that's going to change. We know it's, it could be potentially as much as a 40% reduction in the credits we've been getting. So we're, obviously, we've, we've tried to keep that- So we're, obviously, we've tried to keep that number in the electric bill, in the electric utility account, at a number we think that we can survive that. But unfortunately, until we get through a full year, we won't have a real good idea of what the credit levels are going to be. So the major components of the budget itself, you know, service-based staffing, again, .1. Level-funded expenses. Special ed out-of-district enrollment increasing because of the cost of the programs themselves. One of the drawbacks to the out-of-district tuition programs is they are granted increases by the state. Those grants are usually done December, January timeframe. So we haven't even seen what their, these program changes are going to be. In a typical year, we would expect them to be between 3% to 5%. We have had some of these actually get granted 50% increases in one year. So that's a concern on our side. Obviously, we can't budget for that because we don't really understand it. So we're dealing with what we consider to be the normal increase within our budget itself. The out-of-district transportation, actually, you're going to see a slight decrease this year because, again, where those programs are and the cost is based on each student and where they're going, actually is looking a little bit better than it was a couple of years ago. So we're okay that way. As I said, both, you'll see utility expense decreases in the electric, but a little bit of an increase in the fuel. And then we have three pending negotiations and contracts that we have to cover within this contract. The custodial, the maintenance, and the crossing guards are all up as of June of this year. So we'll be negotiating those this spring. Maybe that's going to be an interesting Zoom scenario. But the, so those are the only pending. The rest of the contracts are all up next year. Teachers and assistants and so on.
Before we move on, just a point that I, point of reminder, really, is to think back to last year, the number of staff reductions that we had. So we had them at both the middle school and the high school because of declining enrollment over time, started to reach the middle school. So we ended up having overall about 6.9 FTEs reduced. Many of them a .2, a .4 positions. So I bring that up because we're not able to make any more reductions other than what's already from where we were from last year with all of those. So just seeing only the .1 adjustment, that just shows the level of detail that we continue to go through with all of our staffing.
We also have to be aware that there's a high potential for service issues for next year as well within this budget. And that being, you know, we know, or appears that our kindergarten levels are lower than what we would have expected had we not been in this COVID environment. We don't know how many parents have held kids out that will now show up next year on top of the regular enrollments that we would have. We don't know.
The bubble kids, in terms of the aging, you're saying?
Well, no, I'm saying that, you know, a parent had the opportunity this year, kindergarten's not mandatory. They had the opportunity not to put the child in school.
Okay.
And now if they show up next year, and we have our regular group of kindergarteners that would normally come in, we could have a bubble coming up that way. We could have other issues within other things that we need to do, some makeup work with students, which, again, is going to put pressure on us to potentially have other resources available. That's not really accounted for in this budget. We're going to have to figure out how to manage it when we see exactly what it is, because it's a big unknown.
We could have a bubble at first grade, too, if people put their kids in private kindergarten during this period of COVID.
Stayed in TK.
It could go either way, yeah.
Correct.
And what, I mean, what's the timeline for waiting for that other shooter drop? And that's like up to August, right?
Yeah.
Exactly.
I just want to be clear so that we're clear with people at home, too.
Yes.
It's up till August.
It really is, because even in the spring, you know, we start looking in March, what are our kindergarten numbers? And then we, as those continue to trickle in, in April, May, and June. But then we see move-ins over the summer, we see students that move out. So you really, until September, and our students are on the doorstep, you really don't know exactly what those, we get a pretty good idea, and we adjust over the summer even.
Sure.
But you're not going to know for sure.
What was the, I think you said, if I heard you correctly, we were a little bit not, but there was a bit of a drop in the kindergarten level based.
We went down one kindergarten class at the IGO this year.
So we're talking, really? Oh, a whole class?
We were four, four kindergarten classrooms the previous year, we're at three this year.
Okay.
But, and I would say, the, it is one of the differences between the school budget and many of the town budgets. And that is, with the magnitude of our budget, as we see things changing after the budget's approved or even during this process, we are constantly looking at staffing as to what adjustments are we going to have to make to make that work.
Yeah.
And so, you know, getting to the summertime and having a little bit clearer picture, you know, unfortunately, it puts us in a tight position where if we have to adjust a teacher from one level down to a different level, there's a lot of obvious issues that go around, you know, when you're moving, you know, teachers around just to make the thing work. But the one caveat, I guess I would say, is we do our best to still maintain those class sizes. And it does get a little tricky when you have three elementary buildings because those elementary buildings are, you know, filled based on the area in which the building services. So you don't have that great thing where, you know, I've got 100 first graders, but, you know, they're not all in the same building. So even though I've got X amount of teachers, I can't have necessarily the exact same class size across. So that has created some conflicts for us in the past and how we try to deal with that. But I think we always will edge towards the youngest having the lower, you know, class sizes. And as they move up, then we're able to kind of move into a reasonable thing. Our class sizes in general are extremely reasonable. And we think that we are able to do the job that we need to do based on those. But again, there's a lot of machinations that are happening behind the scene as the year continues to progress. So while we're giving you our best input today based on what we know, which is in the COVID environment world, not what we would normally have a lot more information on, we will continue throughout this process to review this budget, so. So ironically, normally, I would list just the top changes. But this year, because there's so few, I listed them all. So it's, you don't really have to go into all the detail. This is going to be everything for you. So you have the .1 speech and language teacher, again, who is a full 1.0 this year, but isn't shown that way in the budget. And then you have the following changes that are on the expense side. We're right now projecting, based on the increases and the placements that we have, $188,894 in out-of-district tuition increases. We're looking at transportation, out-of-district transportation's decreasing by $66,625. Technology software licensing, I'm a little nervous that this number may not be enough because the one thing that has happened in this year is that we have had to take on so much software that allows us to work in the remote environment that we never had before. And even to the way we had to change our Microsoft licensing. And we're being pressured right now that that's probably going to have to go up even further for the FTEs because what used to be us just licensing teachers, now it's anybody who's truly in the environment of using as a professional their computer on a daily basis. So that can be head assistants, it can be, you know, secretaries and so on. So that $20,000, to me, is a little bit of a risk. I know we're spending, you know, all of that at this point in time, more than what we were spending from last year. Utility cost reductions in electric of $90,000. Obviously, that's a great savings, but again, there's a, I don't think there's a risk. I think we're okay based on the numbers we've tried to calculate out. But it just shows that, you know, again, all that energy efficiency is just, over the last couple of years, we've driven this number down by almost $200,000. So that's really, you know, quite good. The custodial supplies, we were, pre-COVID, going over in this line as an issue, probably about $15,000 last year, so that's why we're adjusting it by the 25. We also know that, obviously, a lot of our expenses this year are being managed through a lot of grants. And we still think there may be some leftover expenses going into next year of different types of cleaning processes that we'll still have to do, that we never had to do before, which is going to increase the cost a little there. The town has a, which I set out a group, that basically goes out and negotiates for both our electric and our fuel for gas. And based on the next three-year cycle, we feel that basically this $10,000 increase will be the right increase to manage what our thing will, and that should be pretty much solid for the next three years because it's a locked rate. The Medco Coordinator, which is paid through the Medco Grant, basically, we share with Walpole. And this is the, because we don't pay it directly, we pay Walpole for it. So it shows up as an expense on our side versus a salary. But this is due to the increase between last year and this year for what we would owe for that. So we have $91,000 as a net adjustment in our expenses. You know, and that is literally when you go through all the sheets, all the pages, all the buildings. That's all of the changes that we're talking about. Again, unfortunately, one of the biggest still remaining in the out-of-district tuitions.
And the rest of the increase coming from COLA?
Correct.
And COLA?
COLA and L.A.
And the lanes are changing.
Thank you. I always have to say that. Thank you. I appreciate that. Do you mind if I ask a few points, or do you want to finish first going through the thing?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I guess I was, I just wanted to hear a tad more because, I mean, I've listened to you all do budget estimates for years and enjoy them in terms of, you know, gauging their accuracy, which is always fun. But the ones that kind of just stand out to me as, for my own understanding and wondering, where we as a board need to put our ass to the town, is the potential for needing another kindergarten teacher potentially on the staffing. And I know we're not going to know that, but just like how comfortable the district is absorbing that if, you know, that were to happen. And then the other one is the, and again, we're not going to know until the state sets the tuition increases for out-of-district placement. But is there any sense that these out-of-district placements are going to ask for a lot more than they're typically asking for because they've had to absorb costs internally for COVID? And they cut things last year, and now they're going to need them back. You know, this whole like kind of deferred staffing and deferred maintenance that all public entities and human service entities have been going through. So I guess part one, I guess.
So part one, I would say on the kindergarten, so right now, where we're going budget to budget. And we have, and it fluctuates not knowing the number. So as an example, we have three kindergarten classes at Taylor and three kindergarten classes at Burl right now. Will we have three at both of those schools next year? Again, you know, we don't know. It's our best guess at this point. So chances are more likely that we'd see a shift, and we would shift a teacher if we had to have a fourth over to the IGO. That's what has happened every year. We've been able, and that's why teachers.
Rather than going up 1.0.
Every year, it seems like, at least in the last four years, we've had a teacher moving from one of the elementary schools to the other, depending on grades. But usually, it ends up being kindergarten. And then I'll let you speak to the other as far as out-of-district.
Yeah, as far as the out-of-district.
I mean, your estimate's responsible. I just.
Well, I think it's, again, I actually have a full spreadsheet by individual student that makes up the number that I'm showing. The, with the modest, you know, 5% increase, I'm calling it modest because unfortunately, it seems to be modest the way they get them. But the one thing that I, you know, have always praised this town on allowing us to do, and that is the fact that we're able to keep our revolving accounts and our circuit breaker basically one year in arrears. So like last year, when we really got hit hard in the out-of-district tuitions, we were able to advance on the circuit breaker and take more money than we normally would have taken out of that, meaning we were kind of chewing into the next year. The saving grace was that our number grew so much that we actually went for the extraordinary relief on that, and we got that, and that's what paid back what we needed to use, so.
So you're still a year in arrears?
So, yeah, we typically have a year in arrears, and so that is our safety valve. That, if you will, that's our stabilization fund against circuit breaker or against out-of-district. And it protects us and it protects the town from, you know, those wild swings that we had. And like I said, last year was just an amazing, we, in order to qualify, we had to have a 25% increase in one year, which is what we did have.
Oh, Lord. Okay. And then, if, what's the rough, what's the rough amount on that in terms of the circuit breaker?
Circuit breaker that we're receiving this year is $798,000. So, yeah. So that's what we have as a safety valve. But again, it's our, it's programmed, that would be the FY '22 spend. And then obviously, we get the next year right after June 30th, they lock down what we're going to get from the next year. So, so again, that's, you know, that's the only reason why we may not feel comfortable about it. That's the only reason that we can feel comfortable because we know that there's a valve there that allows us to go there. Some towns, and many, actually, many towns have actually created a kind of a stabilization fund for special ed because of this situation. The way I look at it, Foxborough created that years ago by allowing us to do what we do. You know, very few towns get that option.
I do. I like that. The other one was that I heard you mention is the technology software licenses. Is there, and again, I understand feeling kind of edgy about that. And you're always both responsible and thorough with your estimates. Is there any wisdom to just increasing that?
Well, we're, right now, we're obviously tracking and trying to pull together all of the numbers as to where they're going. Part of the problem is, we've tried some things that we're going to drop, that the WebEx, as an example, didn't work for us. So that will be dropping off our list. However, like I said, with the Microsoft licensing, the new licensing that we have to take on is probably another 100 at $50 a person on that. There's a lot of things, you know, we took on Freckle in a bigger way. We've taken on a bunch of things. We've actually taken on quite a bit of stuff that's also now cloud-based, which obviously has a subscription against it.
Right.
Just to make it work better in the remote environment and make less, you know, needing less horsepower internally to manage that. However, the opposite to that is, even though we put it out in the cloud, we like to have backups internally. So we're, we've had to build equipment and other software needs that basically will basically mirror what's out in the cloud to some degree so that we know we have those resources if something goes bad when we go out there. So there's always, we always have to be thinking of a protection against a new advantage that's out there as well.
Right on.
But I, you know, to your, to your point, you know, could we put more money in there? We absolutely could. Unfortunately, as we're shifting things through right now, we don't have the firmest number. We may have that, a better feeling for that over the next 30 days, so.
Nice. Okay. That's fine.
I have a question.
I'll go right next, and then Tina.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, go.
I don't see it listed here anyplace, but it's the, if, for the students that may choose to stay 100% virtual next year, is there an impact on?
You're talking from January to June?
Yes. Is there an impact on the budget that way?
Yes. Not for next, not for FY '22, it's for our current budget right now. We'll have to find those funds unless there's more grant funds that we don't know at this point in time.
And then looking forward into the next school year, what is, what is, what would be the expectation on our obligation if someone chooses to stay?
None right now.
Virtual. We have no obligation.
That's this year for COVID reasons that the Department of Education's required us. So we see that at this point in time as that's just this year.
That ends in June.
That ends in June.
That's what I thought, too. I just wanted to make sure that I understood it.
I think Rob and I are actually thinking along the same lines. It's a little scary. But I was looking at the custodial increase of $25,000. But are we, I mean, I know right now we are cleaning, you said $6,500 a week for disinfecting. So for the second half of the year was another $143,000 for cleaning supplies. I mean, so $25,000 doesn't reflect that level of disinfecting the school. So we're kind of, I mean, if we are in a position where we have to continue with this rigorous level of cleaning, we're not, we don't have that reflected in the FY '22 budget yet?
No, and it's, you know, I think based on what we're hearing and seeing, the potential for the vaccines and stuff, is that, you know, we're still going to have a requirement. And, you know, I'll also say, we bought a lot of the PPE product that we need. We may have some left over at the end of this year that will float into next year. But again, we did that with grant money because obviously was a, you know, a capability of doing it without having to touch our budgets. The, you know, the reality is, I believe that this budget, you know, with that $25,000 probably covers where we need because there will be, you know, let's face it, once this kind of goes away, yes, you're still going to want to have, you know, do the disinfecting. You're probably not going to be spraying every room every day because it's really not, there's not, you know, a reason for that. You still may go through every so often. I think we now know that, obviously, one of the advantages of that is if there's a bad flu outbreak or something, you know, having that machinery available to us and the chemicals can really kind of help knock it down.
Right.
So I don't see that stuff going away. I just don't see it at the same. So I don't see that stuff going away. I just don't see it at the same magnitude.
In the same class.
Quite honestly, if it is, this budget would be about a $350,000 higher budget for an unknown, or at least something that we don't assume is going to be at that level in the future. You know, and if it is, then we're going to have to figure out ways to work with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Fred, did you have another?
The other one was the, I know it's a separate issue, but when it comes to custodial and maintenance contract, is there a budgetary concern potentially for that given the extraordinary amount of work and folks that they've been doing? Or is, are they, do they typically follow suit with the, with the teachers association or? I realize that's a contract negotiation, so it's a, it's a moving target. So.
Yeah. And we do, we do carry money, assuming that there will be some.
Some movement.
Negotiated value. There is money in this budget. It's just not, you know, put out in a line into a.
Understood.
Way that way. So, you know, however, I will also say that, you know, the other six budgets or six contracts basically are out there right now at a 2% increase for that year. So, you know, who, what's going to happen in the future is really, you know, what this negotiation is going to look like. As far as what the custodian, maintenance and, you know, everybody, teachers, everybody's been putting it in. Custodians have been putting in obviously a lot of overtime because that's the only way we could cover as well as having our temporaries. But they are getting paid for that this year through all the grants and everything else that we've done.
Understood. Thanks. Thank you.
I think, I think our budget's based upon previous budgets and norm, and relative norms that are established, right? We are, we accept that we're in a pandemic and there's all these changes and there are a lot of these moving things that exist. But our budget's based upon projecting norm, some norms. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So we just got to prepare for that. But I think, I think the questions are good and sound because, you know, that's kind of in the back of our heads, right?
Well, we just had a discussion about it a few weeks ago about FY 2021 budgets and, you know, we're hoping that we'll get grant money that covers that expenditure. But I think putting the two things side by side, I totally understand how we budget, but it's just trying to coalesce the two things in our minds.
I think if you had to look at what next year would look like, if we assume that we had to continue the same way, obviously we don't have to buy the computers again. But we would be looking at increasing this budget by nearly a million dollars.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's the responsible thing.
No, no, I wasn't at all suggesting that it would be. Yeah, no.
Also, no, I appreciate that. The other one that I guess that I had forgotten to ask earlier is when we look at level expense funding and knowing that a lot of the facilities and physical plant shifts had to take care of certain things, certain needs, are there deferred maintenance concerns that you'd see going forward? I just, I mean, you guys are so good about being up on these things. I just wanted to hear you talk about that a little bit if you wouldn't mind.
We have always been a big proponent of, you know, maintaining the facilities at normal levels on a constant basis rather than having to have huge peaks and valleys in what our costs are. And it's a lot easier to, to keep things operating with normal, you know, preventive maintenance type of operations than it is when you have to replace entire units because of lack of service. It is also, quite honestly, what brought us as a community, the ability to have that HVAC report come out as good as it did compared to a lot of our, you know, sister districts.
It's the reason we were able to go hybrid when other districts had to go rogue because they simply didn't have the physical plant that could sustain.
So I think we have, we're continuing to maintain this year, you know, with everything else that's going on. And again, fortunately, most of the added cost is being, is being borne by grants and stuff. But we are continuing to do our regular maintenance on all of our facilities and to make sure that they stay at the standards that we expect them to, again, to save taxpayers money in the long run. So.
No, thank you. I appreciate you being able to speak to that.
Thank you. So we keep a comparison year by year as to what the increases are and, you know, what our budget is. Again, in this particular year, it's percentage wise at 2.98, a little lower than it's been for the last couple of years. And again, even though last year also was a zero increase in most of our expenses, we did have a fairly significant increase in our out-of-district tuitions last year and our out-of-district transportation. So that really was what drove last year's number. And that was with, as Amy just pointed out, reductions in our staffing positions across the district. So, you know, I think this is a responsible budget at this point as best we can be. And again, this is, it's really, you know, it's always challenging to be, you know, to be developing a budget nearly, you know, nine months in advance of the year of what you're going to. But it's even harder when you're in a situation that we're in right now where you don't have the norms that you would normally have. Enrollments, again, we would, we would assume that the preschool and the kindergarten will come back up into normal ranges once we come back out. Obviously, it's been a challenge on the preschool side of things and we are taking less tuitioned in students in that area just because of the challenges with it and having to keep the social distancing going. So we're, you know, we're looking at a, assuming a decrease this, right now, again, it's very spread out across the board. So it's not like it's, you know, a class or something in a building type of thing that you can deal with. So, you know, however, I got to be honest with you, this is the first time that I actually think that the number we're projecting is lower than it may actually end up being.
Remind me again, how many students we have that are fully remote?
137.
So.
Their class, they're in here.
They're, oh, they are counted.
Still our students. We're still responsible for.
Thank you.
And for.
Yeah.
I did know that. I just forgot.
No, it's good to hear.
No, there's many times, honestly, as we've been going through on the budget and thinking, having to remind ourselves, whether it's expense related that continue to go back to COVID, okay, that's, that's not an expense for next year. It's just this constant back and forth in our conversation and looking at numbers.
Right.
It is a challenge.
Can I ask a question about?
Sure.
I would assume that by, by the way you set your budget, the 32 increase at the high school is sustainable.
Eighth graders coming up is a bigger class than the 12th graders going up.
Yep.
Correct. But that's probably sustainable with the current staffing at the high school, right?
Yes.
So it just, it hits you when, when you see a 30 number, that's like one class. Now, obviously the class is spread out amongst, right? But, you know, a little bit above 30 could be a little, a different thought process. Would you, at least my thinking is.
Yes. And so that's why if you think back to last year and the year before, we had the reduction in sixth grade, the two, and the two reduction in fifth grade, and we did reduce by a math teacher that was a seventh, eighth math teacher last year. We can't do any other reductions at seventh and eighth grade as an example because of them being more like department based versus being homeroom based. And so it, but it allows you at the same time to keep and maintain those really reasonable class sizes because they're spread out amongst all of the different content teachers.
Yep.
Yeah.
So again, this is kind of a same type of summary, but the only added thing here is you really start to see, so the 2% contractual increase for salaries for the most part across the district with lane changes, before the offsets, the salary accounts are increasing by $1,060,005.24. Expenses, as we just talked about, are increasing by $91,001.02, broken down below. The final lower section here is really where our, one of our brighter things, which is only $34,000, but is that we are receiving more money in our circuit breaker by $104,800 to use. And the decrease in the revolving grant area really is in the revolving area. And so what we're having happen there is really nearly a $90,000 decrease in our revolving account availability. And that's because basically between last spring and this year, all those revolving accounts that normally were generating money, right now in most cases are lucky if they're breaking even. Some are losing money, obviously eating into their reserves as well. So where we would normally be able to take as an example from Adult Ed, $15,000 of what they would make towards our electric, okay? Well, we're not even running Adult Ed. So there's no 15,000 for me to take. So we knock that down because we do hope to run it next year. But again, we'll be in arrears trying to catch back up on that. Things like the, the extended day, again, has been a huge resource, well over $100,000 that we've, we've actually used from extended day to cover other costs throughout the district. Again, we, we typically take those revolving accounts and target them against, directly against our utility costs because they're using the buildings. Okay? It's kind of a rent, if you will, type of thing. But again, right now, between what we did in the spring to maintain the staff and, and the fact that we are running at virtually less than half of what we typically would run in extended day, and even the half we're running are only there for half a day because of the way we are within the elementary on an A and B cohort in the morning and the afternoon, we're barely breaking even. So they're not building up any kind of money that basically we could take against our budget. So that's where that's kind of working out. Obviously, we hope after next year it cycles back, that 100,000 would become more available again and could be used. But right now, it's, I'll give the food service, you know, while it's not through our budget process, they are basically a totally separate thing. I'll give them a tremendous amount of credit for the fact that they've been able to survive. And they've done that by A, working tremendously as a team, but B, by doing every program that's been offered to them, you know, whether it was feeding the community, you know, dealing with, with, you know, the children that needed the extra meals to take home for weekends and stuff like that. Every time one of those challenges came to them, they accepted it, they took it. It did bring some money in. It, you know, barely covered their costs, but at least, you know, they were able to also provide a service to the town. So, but again, they, you know, they had been on a great track record where they were finally building up and going positive in their accounts and doing a great job with it. And, you know, a lot of it just got used up to manage the actual cost of running the operation.
Mm-hmm.
There is a mistake on this, which your chairman pointed out to me. So in FY '22, that circuit breaker number actually is 798,239. The total is right. The number didn't get carried into there. So as you can see, revolving accounts going down by 110,000 in total, grants slightly up by about 40,000, and circuit breaker up by almost $100,000 as well. So again, net, you know, net increase of $34,000 over last year's outside resources. So as, again, as I said, that's $2.1 million that the community isn't being asked for that's coming through these different sources of revenue. So as we do, we always try to show the pie. Not, not very much of a difference, obviously year over year here, a slight change, and I mean a very slight change as an increase in the special ed side of things. Most of the other areas are pretty much the same. But so our, you know, our consistent approach relative to technology, athletics, you know, admin, transportation, plant and operations, those numbers have always stayed in that range for the last eight years, you know, nine years that I've been here. But, you know, obviously, a little bit of the change has been over the last few years in the special ed. Now, and over years too, that has changed and gone the other direction. So it really depends on what, you know, what cohort of kids we have and what programs we can offer versus what has to go out. So we do our best to keep the students in district because we think it's the least restrictive and the, and the, obviously the best for them. But there are certain situations where it's not the right fit and we're not going to be doing the best for the child if we do that. So we know that. So again, it just ebbs and flows with the child's needs. So.
So as we move on to next steps, we will continue to review because this is the first pass and going through all of this information, as you're well aware, there's a lot of information to go through here. Many things to monitor as far as any changes that are available as far as revenue and then things that we see, technology, all of that, and that we need to set the date for the subcommittee, for school committee to review and to go drill down even more into questions that you have. And then on December 12th, come back for a second discussion on the budget with, as we said at the beginning, the vote.
December 22nd.
22nd.
22nd. That's a typo. That should say 22nd. We had that changed on there as well. So I'm wondering if maybe the.
Well, we've always allowed the, doing this thing, we've always allowed each.
I'm talking about the typo on this slide here.
The next school committee meeting isn't until the 22nd.
I don't have plans on Saturday. I'm happy.
I think, I think the slide with those couple of changes that we sent to Mike, we sent the wrong one. So it is, thank you, Tina, for that on the 22nd.
Which gives you still, there's three meetings left.
Yeah.
The 22nd, the first one in January, which I don't remember, it's the 12th or something like that. And then on the 26th, you have to make your vote on the budget change at that point in time.
On the, sorry, school committee on the 20, sorry. Oh, no, 26th. Okay.
The only thing, and we, I ask this every year just because obviously I want to be able to supply whatever information you're looking for. But as you continue to look at this, if there are questions that you have or things that you would like addressed, if you can drop us, you know, an email on those, you know, as you know, I have no problem putting together any kind of schedule or anything that you want that actually can break stuff down for you. It's just hard to come to a meeting and expect to have all that data in front of you.
And anticipate everything.
So if I know what's coming at me, happy to make sure you have it and we're as transparent as we can possibly be on that.
Have you talked, has anybody from AdCom reached out to you?
Yeah, actually, the AdCom received, I thought they were going to try to come in on the Zoom, but the three liaisons did receive the same package. We sent that to them. They are working on, oh, there they are. One of them.
Hello.
Hey.
Yeah, Brett, I have been here the whole time and Larry's watching. He's been texting me. So thanks to Brent for preemptively asking a lot of my questions. And, you know, this was, this was great. And we'll do a little bit of review and try and tie in, you know, sometime in the next month or so. So this was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for signing in and being part of this too. There's, as you know and you respect, there's so much detail in our school budget and the detail that Bill and Dr. Burdo supplied. So we really appreciate jumping on board and spending some of your time. Greatly appreciate it.
And the same thing goes, obviously, for the AdCom. I really, even when we're, you know, scheduled to meet, the more information I have before that meeting, the more information I'll be able to supply you at that point in time. You know, we've always been very transparent about what we have as a budget. You may not like everything and you may like some of the things, but the way you're going to get your best answers is to ask the questions upfront.
Yeah, I was very impressed as to percentage wise, how low you guys kept it this year considering all the challenges we've had. So, you know, we'll do our review, but so far that was a very good presentation. So thank you.
You know, I think that's a good point, because we didn't really kind of say it. But I think the tact that the school administration is taking, could we have asked for more and felt like we could justify it? The answer would probably be yes. The reality is we know the environment we're in. We know what the income stream is looking like. We know this is, is not a time that anybody should be trying to get something that's above and beyond. So that's why this is really basically, as I said, a base budget. And we tried to make whatever small adjustments we could that even saved us money wherever we could. So, you know, it's a good point. I'm glad you based, you know, made the comment there though.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you.
So that's your first pass.
I'm sorry. I just have, I have one additional question, tangential, not directly related, perhaps. I know last year, we, part of the capital request was transportation and that got deferred. I also know that we are at the point where we have equipment that cannot be used. We're not allowed to use it. So I'm assuming we're going to continue to make that capital request. But in the key, so that gets deferred again, where does that leave us?
Well, I've actually, I just did finish our capital budget as to what we think it is, but we haven't reviewed it yet. So that's why you won't have it. You'll see it at your next meeting. But to your point, last year, we, we asked for our normal computer reset. We got half of what we normally asked for. Ironically, we ran into the season where we were going to need a lot more. And fortunately, those resources came from a second direction. We asked for two school buses, we, and two full-size school buses and one mini. We got one mini, didn't get the two full-size. We asked to. Uh, we asked to, uh, you know, uh, replace some of our copiers, uh, throughout the district, we got nothing towards that. And we asked, uh, for a first time, uh, the music department came forward with a, a request to replace some very aging equipment, uh, and we got none of that. So, um, obviously, I'm going to tell you right now that we're still going to ask for the computer stuff, but on a lower level, only for next year, just because of everything that was pumped into this year through grants and stuff like that. But we still going to need money to basically support that network, uh, side of things. We are going to ask for four buses. I know that's going to be a, a significant issue, um, but we are building ourselves or digging ourselves into a hole right now, um, that's going to be extremely hard to get out of if it goes much beyond this. To your point, we, we've always had, um, uh, three or four full-size buses that are, are backup, if you will, buses, but they're also used for our field trips. So that's what we're, right now, they, you know, at times they are becoming frontline buses if all their buses go down, which is not a, a great place to be. And to your point, we've also lost buses that the DOT has said that they will not reregister. So, um, it is a concern, I've raised it to, um, you know, Bill Keegan, to try to keep that forefront in their minds too, that if any resources came available through any of this money, um, you know, initially it looked like we might have been able to actually rebuy the, one or two of those buses through COVID money, um, but then, um, they flipped the switch on that and decided that, that, not, not the town, the, the federal government made it so you couldn't do that, uh, unfortunately, which was ironic because they were saying you could only transport a third of the kids you normally would transport on buses. So, um, it was kind of a double whammy. But, so yes, we, we, it's going to be forefront, it's going to be what you'll see next week in the, our next, uh, meeting, um, on the twenty-second. And, uh, you know, we, we kind of, we're keeping everything in, in check as to what we know and, and again, we can only do with what we're supplied, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Anything else?
No.
Nope, just to thank you for the level of detail as always.
Yes.
It's always a solid amount of information, so appreciate it.
And thanks for a really detailed, um, last year we presented the budget and we were actual to our class sizes and our staffings and reducing and moving things around. We were genuine to, to what we had, right? And so to once again come back, which we've done for years, right? To say that again, I think it's important for, for that to be said, that this is not padded, it's not, it's not, um, extended in any way at all.
Well, and, and again, it's...
This is, it is with, with, with conservative approach, but also thought, but also not overreaching.
Yeah, and it's, one of the points that we always make is obviously our budget is about eighty-one percent salaries. And, you know, one of the things I've, I've shown people, um, because they're, you know, the assumption is a lot of times that you're just going to take and add, you know, a percentage to something. We don't do that. Every single one of our budgets is based up on, on, on every single individual, every single position, um, are all what backs up that whole salary number. So there's not a, a single yes number in there, there's not a single thing. We are looking at teacher A, what step are they on, what lane are they on, what does that look like this year versus what does that look like next year? And we go through, uh, four hundred and thirty individuals to build up our salary budget. So nothing is based on us throwing a, a, a target number or a budget number or a estimate at something. Everything is based on actual, based on contract, based on where we're going to end up.
Correct. Great. Thank you, thank you. I think next, next on the agenda is our school committee vote on school choice. In your packets, I think you all read, um, the policy that's, that's in, in there and I didn't, um, that's our next item.
So this was, this is a vote by you annually, it's required by state law for school districts to vote. We have had this vote later on in the school year. Last year it was asked that we bring it forward earlier in the school year, so that's why you have it on your agenda this evening. And, um, as far as our recommendation, I will tell you, it's, it's not to change it and not to, uh, have school choice students in, meaning tuitioned in. And that is based on a, a host of reasons, which are the same as that we've discussed in the past. It's when you do bring students in, it's from only other districts that have school choice. So there's, there's not as many districts around us that have school choice to begin with. And that you have to really think about, well, where would you have room in your grade levels? And then if you have any changes over time, those students are still with us until they graduate over time. And then the other piece too, is that if we were to have students come in, we think our current per pupil expenditure is thirteen and change, for a student that would be, uh, choice in, if you will, that's a five thousand dollar, um, choice in cost. So it's not even what our per pupil, it's, it's less than half of what our per pupil expenditure is. So I just preface it with that for your discussion, but wanted to bring that up as far as the, the past and that our, our recommendation based on where our class sizes are, we know we have good class sizes, but at the same time, we want to be able to keep them at where they are.
Many districts that do this, um, you know, do it typically because they're at risk of not really having a, a student body large enough to maintain their buildings and their, their sizes. So that's not our case, that's not our situation here. We're, you know, uh, we're still at a level where, you know, um, yes, we might have an empty classroom because we've eliminated a, a class size, but that's, you know, different than, um, you know, to survive, you need to have a first grade class, uh, and you wouldn't have enough if you didn't choice in. And, and so most of the districts that do that, do that for those reasons. And financially, some do it because they know if they take on X amount, it's just X amount of more dollars that they can have in their overall budget. Again, I think Foxborough, um, you know, our, our real tact here is, is to do the best we can for Foxborough students. And, um, and, you know, we have varying degrees of students throughout the district with different needs all the way through. Having to create this potential of bringing some students in and, as Amy said, having to, to maintain those students from whatever time, whatever point they come in through twelfth, um, can put pressure on you as people move into a district. You might have had, you know, room for three, four kids on a, on a twelfth, or let's say an eighth grade level, and then the next year you have three families move in that are all eighth grade students. That means you're just adding those many more on top of what you did. So, um, I think we've been thoughtful in how we manage our staffing against our student population. I think our class sizes are reasonable and I think our buildings are being utilized appropriately with that. So all the reasons you typically would make that decision to allow, um, school choice don't exist in Foxborough.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I, I have no problem voting on this tonight as long as, you know, as the rest of the committee is up for it, I'd be happy to make a motion that we continue with our current policy of Foxborough Public Schools not to admit non-resident students.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Rob. Motion by Tina, seconded by Rob. Further discussion?
I understand the reasons that the, the, some districts around us typically say no. But I guess that doesn't move me. I just think that Foxborough has a great school system and at times we have dipping enrollment and I think we could have room for a few students to try it out, to see what it looks like rather than just blanketly saying no. But that's just my position and I don't disagree with anything that Bill said or Amy said, it just doesn't change my policy position on it.
Thank you.
So I won't be voting for it, but go ahead and have the vote.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion as presented by Tina, please raise your hand. Three, against, one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for holding the, uh, vote earlier. I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Back to, I think Bill or, or Dr. Burdo, I'm sorry, approval to establish a technology revolving account.
So... I'm going to actually ask to defer this to the next meeting. We're looking at, what we're looking at doing and, and we're trying to make sure we do this appropriately through the state guidance. As you know, we are now offering, uh, we're going to be offering an insurance program against the laptops that are being put out there, uh, for parents to make the decision as to whether or not they want to go that way or, or kind of run the risk of having to pay for, uh, repairs. However, there is, under the state statutes, there's certain ways that you have to actually build this revolving program. So I'm not quite comfortable at this point that we have all of that nailed down to, to present to you tonight, but I did, I, I do want to have it, have this conversation so you understand what this is all about. The, the justification that we're going to do is basically because of, of Aaron and his team's capabilities, um, our intention is to basically get certified as a Lenovo repair center. Be able to do, uh, a lot of what would be under warranty work ourselves, still having to put out obviously larger component issues, um, you know, outside of the district. Bring the money in internally, pay for all of our materials, um, and replacements when those happen, um, through the, this funding source. At thirty-five dollars, you can see obviously it's a fraction of what these computers cost, it's a, it's a good deal, but like any insurance policy, the assumption is for everyone that goes bad, you have a number that don't and, and, you know, you pray that you have more that don't than that do. And we think that this obviously, um, can be maintained, but it, we need to be able to maintain the money on our side to make those replacements and, and make those repairs as needed. And so again, the, the wording for the revolving account, um, I've actually talked to a couple of different jurisdictions and I've got a couple of different answers as to how they did it, so I'm not as comfortable as I should be with asking you to, to have this vote at this point in time.
Thank you for that explanation and I do, I do appreciate you looking into it, looking ahead and, and planning for it and let's get, let's get the right wording and the right established account. So seems like a very smart and wise thing to look at, so. I'm okay at the table?
Yes.
Good?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, approval of donations.
So this, as you have approved in the past, our thankful, thank, we are thankful to the boosters who provide additional support, for this is for the girls and boy soccer, for, um, the girls, you have a check there for two thousand dollars and then another one for one hundred, uh, five hundred dollars and then for boys, one hundred dollars. And that's from the Foxborough Kickers Club.
So this would be a, a motion to accept the donation from the kickers in the amount of twenty-six hundred dollars total.
So moved.
So moved by Brett?
I'll second.
Seconded by Tina. Any further discussion? All in favor with gratitude, of course? Four, zero, thank you very much. Other matters?
So, um, just wanted to give a kind of a quick update because we're coming to kind of the close of phase two of the Borough project. Phase two basically gives us the kindergarten classrooms back, first and second grade classrooms, um, the new media center and the new technology lab. Due to some unforeseen issues within the construction itself, the front entrance way will not be done, um, until mid-January, but, um, we have worked out, uh, emergency access and, and other plans as to how we move around that building on the other side, uh, with classes and students and even through the area, um, you know, for January fourth when we reopen. So we're a little behind in the front entrance way, but we're technically on schedule with the classroom turnover for January fourth. We have worked out, um, the ability because of, of being in the, in the COVID environment right now where we didn't need the gym, to give that to the contractor earlier, um, which that gym becomes two, uh, bathroom facilities for the first and second grade, it becomes a music, uh, uh, room and a, and an art center. And it's in process right now to be done, which wasn't going to be given to them until June of this year. So we're, we're hopeful that that gets done sooner and, uh, takes some of the pressure off of the next phase, which, uh, basically has to be done by September first, so.
That one little gym becomes all of those things?
Yeah, yeah. Well, but you need to understand that the auditorium also, the auditorium got, was, was reduced down in size, so that...
Okay, thank you.
That makes more sense, right?
I still like architects, I'm like, wow, that's magical.
Yeah, yeah. There's two floors in there, you didn't know this, there's a whole other level.
You know, I, I, I will, I will be honest, I won't say it hasn't been without its challenges so far, which is, I guess, no different than the other project we've faced, but, uh, I have all the confidence in the world in the building committee that we'll make it through this. The staff out there has been excellent, um, you know, working around the, the different obstacles that obviously are happening in a construction phase. It's, you know, we, we did it with the high school, but we had obviously young adults that were a little bit easier to move around with and, and to explain what you had to do and they understood it. When you're doing it with pre-K to fourth graders, it's a little bit more challenging because they're much more interested in every, everything that's going on around them. But again, I think the, the teachers have done a phenomenal job, uh, they worked with the hit cups and when, when we walk in in the morning and the heat wasn't working the way it was supposed to and, and we had to get it back running and stuff like that. They, they've worked through all that, it's been great, um, I think it's been a real team effort out there. And quite honestly, I, I think we're getting what we, what we want quality-wise and, you know, facility-wise, um, but, uh, you know, it is, uh, it's a long two and a half year, um, step that we're going through. So hopefully phase two, uh, within the next, you know, month, uh, will be completed.
Thank you, thank you. Any members? I'm going to end with Dr. Burdo's, but any?
We, we had the opportunity to do a site visit, um, a, a few weeks ago at the Borough School and it really is coming along, the school building committee did. And, uh, it is, it's coming along so well and we have a lot to be proud of and, and Bill has done a phenomenal job leading, you know, both from the school business side and the, the building committee side. We're really lucky to have him, uh, at the helm of this project, so. Just wanted to say that and maybe we can bring some slides in January, um, once we get through to the end of phase two to show the committee and the, the community, um, some of the, the really awesome parts of the building that are completed or almost completed. I think, I think that would be really good too, so.
Brett? Nothing to add? Huh? Dr. Burdo.
All right, so one of the things that we just learned yesterday, we had mentioned at one of the last school committee meetings, that in January, MCAS testing was going to take place for all eleventh graders. So we received word yesterday that students in grade eleven will no longer participate in testing during the January, February window. Now, that's testing for ELA in math, so they're saying that it's being postponed to a later date, later in the year, we'll see what happens there. Students in grade twelve though, the class of twenty-twenty-one, um, as well as any others that still need to take the test, will be able to in January in order to earn their competency determination.
These are the holdovers from tenth grade forward?
Yes, and, and, um, I don't even know that we have any, that's just, you know, that, that's, anybody that would be...
Right.
...eligible would still be able to if they were a senior. But the important part right now is because we were looking at the testing window in January of having to go, instead of ten days...
Yeah.
...five days, remote for the majority of students and just the guidance department and the high school administration have been meeting with them, how do we do this? So this being postponed can breathe a little bit easier right now, um, for the moment and we'll see what, what is to come.
Okay.
So that, that was something from yesterday. We've also received, you know, the changes in quarantining and the number of days that's, that's come out from the state and that, so all of our nurses who've just done, talk about people doing a phenomenal job, we've just, all, all of them in all five buildings have been wonderful and just talking with parents constantly, um, when they have concerns or questions, so we're taking all of that information and, um, if there's changes in periods of quarantine for anyone that would be out, we're continuing to update the website every Wednesday as well. And that communication, if it were at a classroom level, then we're sending that out to parents as well. So every day is a different day and, uh, we are happy, as I've said before, that if we have students in school, it's a good day. That's our goal, is students in school every day.
Well, that, actually, I'm sorry, so that does remind me, I meant to ask, with the changes just, that just came out today from the governor, that's not having any impact, um, on the way we're executing in schools right now? So as we move back to, back a stage, right? Is that the right word?
Correct.
That's...
Did it advance the stage?
Phase, yeah, phase two, it's, we went back to phase one instead of phase two, but I don't think it impacts schools.
It's not going to impact us.
Okay.
Do you want to update on the computer deployment?
Oh, sure, so we've been, the technology department again, talking about working really, uh, long hours too and deploying. So we have been deploying this week at the middle school, we should have all computers deployed, um, by the end of this week at the middle school. And also starting with third and fourth grade, deploying computers starting on Thursday with them of this week. And they have all kinds of different, um, activities they're going through with digital citizenship and getting their passport, their, their... and getting their passport, their laptop license and getting them ready to take them home. But they're going to have at least two days of in-school work with them, with their teachers. So they're really fully acclimated to all the apps and things that they need on the computer before they take them home. And when they do the elementary, the computers will stay at home. They will not be bringing them back and forth. We believe that we will have second grade as well. We're still waiting on another shipment. But as far as kindergarten and first grade, because of the shipment of when they're coming in to be imaged, that most likely is not going to be until after the first of the year. But if we can get second, third and fourth deployed in the next week, that's really exciting. And just listening to students as well as teachers, and this was here recently, that the quality of the laptops, just really, really good feedback on them. So kudos to the technology department because it's been a feat. And then at the same time, it's everyone, all hands on deck, if you will, because as we've described before, that white glove deployment, it's not a matter of just handing someone a box with a computer. It's all of the apps that they need, the content filtering for security for, when you think about internet safety, is at a different level depending on whether you're in elementary, whether you're middle school, whether you're a high schooler. So it's all based on whatever that grade level and that age of that student needs. So when they have that device handed to them, it's all preloaded with all of that.
Great. Great news to end the meeting.
Very good.
Those are some great reports. Thank you all very much. Thank you to everyone who's tuned in and thank you all to the community, the parents and the students for being strong and doing all of our best each and every day for COVID to keep us in school and doing this. Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Tina, motion?
Second.
Seconded by Brent. All in favor? Oh, thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Have a good night.